Person instruction in September. We are also looking forward to the return for fall sports and other district extended date activities and programs. We will continue to implement safety guidelines and protocols recommended by the CDC and the Department of Health and will adjust accordingly to our community COVID-19 transmission rates and vaccinations. We will also continue to communicate with our families through our school website, social media, and other communication tools, including School Messenger and Talking Points. Our district website, which is translatable into Spanish and other languages, included detonator earlier called an advisory page that will house all information for the community. That concludes my report.
Excellent. Is there a motion to accept this? Second? Roll call, Mr. General. Ms. D'Arcy?
Yes.
Now.
Yes.
Steedley?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Sebien?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Motion approved. Before we move to item five, I don't know if it's... The board president has his time on the table. Everybody has their extended day table, two minutes. Item number five, Athletic Committee Report, Mr. Spencer.
Sergeant Bonquita, Bevalente Community School. We discussed the progress on the new school. The civil structural, steel, and foundation drawings were completed by the architect last week. The drawings for these three trades will be put out to bid this week with pricing due mid-August. The current schedule has the award at the end of August. Foundation work to start the first week in September. The overall schedule has remained unchanged with the completion of the new school scheduled for August of 2023. The air conditioning project at Roosevelt, Lincoln, and Livingston School. The contractors at Roosevelt is scheduled to complete the electrical conduit and distribution wire by the end of this week. They will then start the installation of the installation of AC units within the classroom. The project is on schedule for completion mid-August. The contractor Lincoln and Livingston School have installed 90% of the air conditioning units. They are now completing the electrical upgrades to both buildings. The project is also on schedule to be completed mid-August. The gym floor restoration replacement at New Brunswick High School and New Brunswick Middle School and Roosevelt, the gym floors refinished at high school and in middle school are over 50% complete. The lines and logos are scheduled to be done this week with additional top clear coats to follow. The removal and placement at the Roosevelt floor is scheduled to start the first week in August. Additionally, we review the monthly operations and work order status for the buildings and ground and shipping and receiving department. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Moving on to item number six, the Athletic Committee Report, Mrs. Sedowski, chairperson.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. The Athletic Committee did not meet this month, but we do have some things to report out. Mr. Tomsted, our athletic director, has resigned, and right now interviews are being held to choose a new athletic director. So when we have more information, hopefully by the next meeting, we will get that to you. The other summer sports have... Some of our fall sports teams have had a two-week time period where they did have some practices, and most of those are complete or just about complete. So that really is enough, is the end of our athletic report. Thank you.
Mrs. Sedowski, we do have a June 2021 bank reconciliation.
So I need a motion to accept the June reconciliation report.
Okay, roll call, Mr. General. Ms. D'Arcy?
Yes.
Ms. Sedowski?
Yes.
Mr. Steedley?
Yes.
So Lee?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Sebien?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number seven, Curriculum Policy Committee Report, Mrs. Enri Alseewer, chairperson.
The curriculum policy committee did not meet this month. However, there was just a couple of updates. We have the curriculum and instruction on it to present to the board just as reminders. During the summer school, we are working with two community partners providing programs, activities for our students. The play is safe started the end of June and continues to run as we speak, and is operating at six schools. Specifically, it's operating five programs, and it started their programming the first week in July. Yesterday, our summer school programs started operated by the district. It includes students enrolled in both virtual and in-person learning sessions. Students can participate in either summer enrichment programs or credit recovery courses. We are operating eight sites. Also, you can check the district website for summer learning plans, which are available for all grade levels and content areas. So anytime you want to know what is being taught, you can check our website. The summer school, as I said, started yesterday, operating at eight schools, and it will be running through mid-August, August 13th. Programs, grade levels, and attendance. This is only the second day, though we have a little over 1,200 enrolled. We're still... The numbers still haven't been determined in terms of how many students actually will participate, because as you know, during the summer season, many families have opted to take vacation. And so it may be a couple of days before we get more students in. Currently, I believe around 700 showed up yesterday. So even though they had enrolled more, we'll give it a few days. We're operating preschool disabled program, project-based learning. At the high school, summer bridge program, credit recovery program for grades nine through 11, credit advancement for grades nine through 11. And the P-Tech is operating a summer bridge program for grades eight. And we just wanted to provide a brief update. That ends our report.
Thank you, Mrs. Seedley, for that report. Item number eight, Educational Services Commission of New Jersey report. Today I had the opportunity to visit the commission's conference center, and so they have one of the state-of-the-art conference centers that is available for use now. It actually does have an amazing hybrid television. In addition to serving specialty students, the commission has really expanded to do that, and I think they've already been hosting a number of different districts in that conference center. So have you seen it? Have you seen it? Yeah. And so it's good, and the summer programs have been going very well with the commission. Move on to item number nine, the president's report. Since our last meeting, time flies. I think that's when we had the groundbreaking for the Cancer Institute. Right? That was before last week, right? And so I just wanted to share a few words. As some of you know, my dad, who knew him, Dr. King, on September 4th died of cancer. And you see this institute, and you see the promise, and you see just the opportunity that New Brunswick was afforded. Many of us were at the Bonquita Valente groundbreaking. So a $55 million school, a $700 million Cancer Institute, really, really, that can save lives in New Brunswick is something that... One of the things that we as residents of New Brunswick should be most proud of, and that we... And there were some detractors, but those who are defending a torn-down old school and talking about size of a big school, a $55 million school, I have been on a number of school boards, and the design of this school is state-of-the-art. The research has gone to this school, the safety of this school, the environmental protection of students. So one of the things that's very, very important is that we should be very proud of what we've done in this city. And we should stand up very proud that a $55 million school at no expense to taxpayers I do a lot of work with other school districts. They can't believe that we have that opportunity. So that groundbreaking was phenomenal. The two groundbreakings were phenomenal, and I just said, we as residents of New Brunswick, every one of us, whether we were initially for it or against it, should be very proud of what's happened. So with that, I'll open it up to public comments. Mr. General, who do we have on the list?
So the first person we registered their intent to speak is Mr. Charlie Cradville.
And Mr. Cradville, you're no stranger to us. What we're trying to do to be responsive to people before the podium, if you have any questions, if you could give us the questions in advance and while you have your statement, we can determine whether we can answer them or not, and that would help us to be a little more responsive. So if you wouldn't mind giving us whatever questions you have in advance, and then we will work on the floor and give your statement.
Good evening, Dr. Caldwell, members of the board, Charles Cradville, the New Brunswick resident, the editor of New Brunswick Today. I'll try to summarize everything and all of what your response on it. Definitely have to agree to disagree about the loss of the Lincoln Annex School. I know that throughout the whole pandemic, there was a whole of one person that spoke from the public in support of selling the school, giving the school away. It was Mr. Jimmy Staton, and I believe he actually doesn't have any children that are living with the consequences of that decision. So the first question is, is there any parent not on this board who supported selling Lincoln Annex and is actually sending their kid to the warehouse school? I would like to know how much of the $55 million that's been deposited has already been expended, spent. I'd like to understand a little bit more about the athletic director resigning. I know we've gone through a number of ADs in a short time, and I'm curious what the cause of this most recent personnel change is. And I've asked about this before. I know last summer, this board expressed that they wanted to change the name of the Woodrow Wilson School, something I would support, but I see it's still called Woodrow Wilson today, and I haven't heard much about plans to name it for someone else or to change the name in some other way, and I'd like to hear if there's any plans for that. I know out front of this building, there are more than a dozen pillars that were unnecessarily installed in the parking lot, where I guess there was a plan to put up solar panels, but that plan got changed, and those pillars are still there. I was told those would be removed or sanded down last summer. I know things changed with the pandemic, but is there any plans to correct that issue? And I do have concerns about that warehouse building being used as a school. I know that it does look nice on the inside, but on the outside, there's cracks, and I'm concerned about structural integrity of the building. I know it's not owned by the district, and so I wanted to ask if anybody can enlighten me, elaborate on if there's been any inspections and when the last time there was an inspection of that building is. And, you know, I guess I do just have to kind of summarize some of the things that changed over the past time that we've been away from this space, and it is good to see you all in person and not be on a contentious phone call. You know, very frustrating, some of those meetings. But I do think that there's some things that we'll never forget that happened during that time period. I know that, you know, this board has rolled back, you know, the public's ease and ability to make comments at the meetings. You know, of course, you used to just form a line and speak up, but around this whole issue, when a lot of people started coming to your meetings, you cracked down and made it harder to speak up. You changed your policies and forced people to sign up in advance, and, you know, as a result, you're hearing from less members of the public, and there's less of a dialogue and less democracy. So, you know, I certainly won't forget that. Would encourage you, you know, constructively to consider going back to the old way and changing the board policy. I didn't see any reason that it had to be changed in the first place, so I would encourage you to change it back. And I do, you know, I just have to note that for the record, in all those frustrated conversations we had, you know, one judge thought that you violated the Open Public Meetings Act, another judge found that you violated the Open Public Records Act, and at the end of the day, you gave away one of our schools. We're short a school, and, you know, we need to do everything we can to ensure the success of the proposed school on Jersey Avenue and ensure that kids have safe routes to get there. But, you know, for the time being, we are down one school. We are short a school. You couldn't afford to lose the school, but you gave it away, and I for one, you know, not going to forget that. I think both of us in the community who witnessed that decision-making process and, you know, the way that the public was misled by people like Mr. Staton, by some of the board members and the public officials who advocated to get rid of that school. And, you know, I just hope that, you know, we keep an open mind as we move forward, try to get the public more involved and listen to us more as we move forward. I see my time's up, so I'll just patiently await your answers to my questions now.
So a couple of the easy answers. We obviously do not talk about personnel issues, so there will be no answer on that particular question. I think that if you polled most of the residents of New Brunswick and most of the parents in the district, a free $50 by $5 million school, most of the parents, and you have to remember that we as the Board of Education represent the entire city of New Brunswick. We represent all of the parents. We don't represent some parents that don't want to take a bus to a new school. We represent all parents. And so that's why that this decision was really, without question, the best decision we could ever make. Some of the other questions, Dr. Johnson, Mr. General, are there any other questions that you can provide an answer to, or we can send an answer to them if we can't provide them tonight?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cradville. It's good to see you in person. It's good to see everybody in person. The board is anxious to get back and be here in person, but safety comes first. Mr. General, who's next?
Next in the microphone is Ms. Linda Stork.
Good to literally see you again.
Hello.
I first have a question about the procedure. If somebody didn't realize that the sign-up to speak would not be available at the meeting and must still be done ahead of time by email, would they have an opportunity to speak tonight?
Okay. Could you list, as I asked before, could you list your questions? Give us a... Do you have other questions?
Yes, one question at a time, and it's a person that is known to you, so it wouldn't be a surprise.
Could you speak up? I'm either getting old or the mic's not working well.
I'm also using my mask, so I'll speak a little louder. It's a person that is known to you. It wouldn't be a surprise speaker that I'm pulling out of somewhere. Okay, that was one question. The other question would be, I don't doubt that the new school would be state-of-the-art technically, but the simple fact of the matter is, all the research in the Eric Educational Research Database shows that the larger the school, the more the detrimental effect on the academic achievement of especially the poorer and the minority of students. So considering the population that this school is intended for, it just doesn't seem like a wise choice to make it 50% bigger again than the one it's replacing. The graph goes, it's inverted proportional. The schools get larger, the academic performance... It's the one factor that has been proven to mitigate the effects of poverty. The most effective thing we can do is to make schools smaller, and instead, we've got this school that's bigger than anything to do with poverty. Which also, then, my other question would be, what happens when $55 million can't complete the school? Are the taxpayers not on the hook to get it finished? Because I don't see any way, looking at like what retro costs and the mitigation that needs to be done, I don't see how it could be done for $55 million. That doesn't even seem reasonable. So who would then be on the hook for the rest of the money? And also, would it be possible to have the agenda available like it is at the other meetings, like for city council or something, where you could look at the agenda before the meeting so you can get a feel for what's on there? And also, could the meetings be broadcast? Because I noticed quite a few more people were attending when it was over the phone, especially people who have children or, you know, they're trying to get dinner, whatever. So those are my questions. If... Could I get an answer right away to whether somebody else can? Because otherwise, I would like to give some of my time, so Miss Moore would have some time.
So the first question, you want me to give that about sign-ups? I didn't...
I believe she's speaking about Miss Moore, correct?
Yes.
Didn't say that you had to do the email for the meeting in person in order to speak.
You actually didn't. We had the sign-up sheet there until 7:00, but, you know, if it's okay with you, Dr. Caldwell, we can give Miss Moore her chance. I did notice she came in at 7:01, and we had just pulled the sign-in sheet. So for the record, we had the sign-up sheet for any of the member of the public that showed up today before the start of the board meeting, like we did pre-pandemic. And we pulled it at 7:00 so that I could have everybody for the meeting.
Yeah, but this is our first meeting back in person, so we will allow that. But I want to respond to a couple of things. As you know, I teach at a university. I have my doctorate. I've done a lot of research. One of the things when you look at your research is you have to look at effect size. You have to look at the statistical credibility of research, and I will guarantee that all the research does not say that this is the best way to mitigate... In fact, most of the research doesn't say that smaller schools are the best way to mitigate poverty, that you got to do a better job of research, because in fact, small sizes is not proven to really be the be-all and end-all in ending poverty or improving student education. So when you're doing research, you have to understand there are a whole bunch of variables. You can go on the internet and look at what's there, but very often, unless you go to actual research manuals, some peer-reviewed effective manuals, you can get real stuff. So you come here talking about everything about environmental and other things, yet the research is not very solid. So you can come and say whatever you like, but you have to understand... So I would encourage you, and I can point you in the direction of some peer-reviewed journals that will give you a different result as to the size of a school and the effect in economically challenged communities. So this happens, research is one of the things that I do, so I happen to know that, and I haven't said much. But when people keep coming in and throwing things off the internet, it really is inappropriate and misleading. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Oh, okay. But since you just said that I just pulled that off the internet, it's from the Eric Research Database. It would have been the same if I went and got the microfilm.
Well, the Eric Research Database is a number of different peer-reviewed journals, some of them more credible than others. So this begins off Eric, which I've used for my dissertation, doesn't mean it is credible.
I read all the... And I always said it was the be-all and end-all. It is the most identifiable, the most... The factor that has the biggest influence.
Well, understand...
More to clarify more than a lot of things that...
Well, just so you know, what Eric does, it pulls actually from a number of different peer-reviewed journals, and peer-reviewed journals aren't always of the same quality. So when you look at the Eric database, it does not mean that it's legitimate, then you have to look at the statistical validity of those studies. So just going off the internet and coming and saying something's environmentally wrong or others, you know, you really have to do a lot more research, and it's a lot harder than people think. So with that, we want to give a chance to the young lady to speak. Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you, Ms. Stork, for speaking over me. Thank you.
Hi, yes, my name is Danielle Moore. It's kind of sad to hear you say, wow, I think people should do more research. Due to where... What research did you do in this area to say that this was located for a school? I will introduce you to myself now, due to what I mentioned to you before. I'm a person who goes through a lot of pain. City can't say that I'm lying, county can't say I'm lying. Where the Lord has blessed me with visions, where I'm able to see things, prove things to the city. Why? Because the Lord is working with me. And I told you, wow, that is not an area safe for a school, whoever that was. Oh, it will work out. No, it will not work out. And like I said, for you, Mr. Johnson, wow, it was good to see that you finally spoke to me, even though I know you and Mr. Mayor Cahill were just trying to look good. But one thing I saw, wow, no need to worry, it's with Mr. Johnson, Mayor Cahill, or Captain J.T. Miller, two hungry men, hungry for money, but you're above the law and you don't do the right thing. And how many times have I proved to you that, wow, this is not an area for a school? Well, I made a report, what? I'm walking through there. I'm a grown woman, I can defend myself. Them guys attacked me. So thank you, did it with me instead of not a child there with sexual harassment. What has the city done with the liquor store, when you said it would be okay? Wow, please take the picture, line up the pictures, go to my face with pictures, and you will see how much drinking, all the cases of beer in the area. And you still say, wow, this is a good word area for a school? See, you do your research. You take the time to go sit over there at least three hours, and you will see what is going on in New Brunswick. How many times the police cars have been to that liquor store bar on the corner of Prefrentis Handing there? Please, how many times would I have the evidence? Like I said, the police don't like it, they think I'm following them. I'm not doing my walking therapy, but wow, how am I the one to get the pictures of the proof every time? What needs to be done? Because like I said, the Lord does work with me to prove something needs to be done. And I was setting an example, due to where, what? When I kept telling the city council, out of 10 lights that was out on the corner of Livingston Avenue, I picked one light. I said, please, do something with this light at Livingston and Handy. They didn't listen to me four months. That was where the man got killed right there, hit through Baldwin Street, which is on record. Please, feel free to look at any of my things that I'm saying to the city, warning them. And then now you wonder why, like I said, I got Livingston Avenue approved with $6.6 million, because it's not about money to me, it's about not seeing anyone get hurt. And like I said, due to where I tell you another thing I'm saying, it's very shame. How what? Board of Education, planning bureau, city council, city hall, police department, all this was judged on your health. How many of you have already have cancer? Oh, yes, I do see it, but it's sad. One thing about it, if you weren't born with cancer, you can't blame anyone else for your cancer. Sure, my grandmother died from cancer, but what? From smoking cigarettes, from this and that. It's nobody else's fault if you're not born with it, but yours for not controlling your health. And it's very sad, what I'm saying, like I said, due to where, what? You live here, you're old enough, you live your life, this is time for the kids to live You live here, you're old enough, you live your life. This is time for the kids to live their lives protectively. And like I said, it's not safe over there. Oh, now that I proved my point, it's good to see why the police department is over there. But why should I have to keep providing evidence where jobs should be done the right way? It's just really sad. And like I said, please, man got assaulted last week at the gas station. Beat him up, got stitches in his head and all, right there on the corner of French and Baldwin. Wow, burglary, what, two weeks from there? Please, how many, please, would you please just take the time to listen to me? Go sit over there two hours, and you will see what's going on. Well, I keep telling you, that's not an area for a school. But wow, really, if you care, because it's not your kid, your grandkids, that will be going through this safety hazard. But if you really believe you care about the children, please, take the time, go look at all the police reports, how many bodies they're picking up. Or what, I can show you a video. Like I said, oh, the police department don't like me, due to where, wow, I have all the evidence, but how do I have the evidence? Where I'm just walking, just to keep seeing every time something goes wrong. That's because the Lord, like I told you before, is working with me to provide that you're wrong with what you all did. And that is not an area for a school. Please go, like I said, take the time, look at all the police departments. But like I said, go to my face, look page, you will see evidence. What I speak, I provide evidence with. And it's very sad. None of you will take it seriously. But like I said, guys, when it does go wrong, you will all feel it. It's not going to be right until the police, without the police department on standby at all times when this school is open. So please, just go take that, take the time and look at yourself.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, but I'm sorry, five minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. General, do we have another speaker?
Yes, the next speaker is Ashley Caldwell.
Please state your name.
Hello. As you may know, my name is Ashley Caldwell, and I am honored to have been elected by my peers as the student representative to the Board of Education. And although I don't officially start this position until September, I want to share some of the amazing things that are happening in our district this summer. So on June 22nd, 2021, New Brunswick High School, Health Sciences and Technology High School, and the Adult Learning Center with CARE students graduated from the New Brunswick High School campus. The ceremonies took place at specified times. These events were orchestrated very well, portraying the essence of tradition with meaningful speeches provided by dignitaries and administrators during each ceremony. A number of New Brunswick students and their families expressed that in-person ceremonies gave them a feeling of normalcy as they watched with pride as the graduates walked across the stage to be acknowledged as graduates of the graduating class of 2021. June 25th, students from NBHS, NBHST, and NB Middle School created a mural on George Street, New Brunswick, in celebration of Pride Month. This program was sponsored by the Middlesex County Arts and New Brunswick PAC. Our teacher, Mrs. Fleming, led the students in this endeavor. On July 10th, she also led the students to create a mural on George Street to kick off Restaurant Week. This program was sponsored by Mid-Middlesex County Arts and the New Brunswick PAC Center. July 19th, summer school enrichment courses, algebra boost, and AP summer programs for rising ninth grade students began in the high school and will culminate August 13th. The building has been prepared appropriately to ensure safety for students with personal distancing and students and staff wearing masks during the school day. I will have one to write a report on as summer programs progress and as students prepare to enter high school in September for the 2021 to 2022 school year. This concludes my July 20th student representative report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know who your dad is, but you make me very proud, so. With that.
Yes, we have one more speaker, Yolanda Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez?
Hi, good evening, board members and the people here. I'm Yolanda. I want to say thank you so much for listening to talk, like almost two years, the parents come in and always we talk about the usual tradition. Want to say thank you. Hoy me alegro mucho de escuchar esas buenas noticias respecto a los arreglos en diferentes áreas de nuestras escuelas. I am very happy to hear about all the good news with regards to all the different repairs in the different areas across the district. Gracias por escuchar nuestras peticiones. Thank you for hearing our petitions. Respecto a la construcción de la nueva escuela, estamos muy pendientes de que las promesas sean realidades. Nos preocupa mucho el presupuesto de 55 millones. Regarding the building of the new school, we are going to be very attentive to the developments. And we are going to, we are very concerned about the budget of $55 million. Gracias por todos sus esfuerzos y apoyo durante el año de la pandemia. Para las familias fue un reto grandísimo, al igual que para todos. And thank you very much to everyone for all the efforts during the pandemia. And to all the families, this was a great deal.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the computers and thank you for the internet. I appreciate it. And my experience at home is very, very difficult. So I'm very happy to, this year, I'm thanking the kids back to school. My son, he had a very, very hard year, but thank God he have an honors diploma. Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing pains to our attention. And we know, and we feel your pain. It has been a very hard and tough year. And so we tried to do the best we can, but just really appreciate you mentioning some of the things we need to. And again, we do listen and we try to do the best that we can, and sometimes it takes time. You know, much of our money comes from the state, and so we're delayed in doing things. We don't control everything, so just appreciate that. Mr. General, is there anyone else?
Now that concludes the public portion of the meeting, Dr. Caldwell.
Okay, and thank you all for sharing your public comments and those who've come out tonight. We move to item number 11, the consent agenda, Resolutions A through AX. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Is there a second? Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedalsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving to item number 11, the Finance Committee Report. I move that the Finance Committee Report be accepted as presented. I'll ask for a motion. Is there someone to move it? Is there a second? Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedalsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevilla.
Yes, I'm standing on page 7.
Still noted.
Please.
Yes, sir.
I'm standing on page 2.
Still noted, Mr. Spencer. Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item number 13, Resolution for Closed Session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:46, provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows: personnel matters, matters of attorney, client privilege. Now therefore being resolved, the aforementioned subjects shall be discussed in closed session by the Board of Education and administrative staff. And the minutes of said closed session, the session will be made available to the public where the reasons for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exist. Is there a motion?
Oh.
Is there a second? Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedalsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell. Mrs. Sevilla. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
We are in closed session.
Welcome back to open session. Are we at a closed-session meeting? I'm now going to call on Mr. Ortiz, the Chair of the Personnel Committee.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee have consensus on the report. All items on the report for personnel, I need a motion to accept personnel report as amended.
Is there a motion? Second. Did you move? Patricia first? I think she did, I think she did.
For the record, I have a motion from Mrs. Seawood and a second from Mrs. Farrell.
All right, roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedalsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Please.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell. I'm staying on page 9. Still noted. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Wonderful. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedalsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes, we are adjourned.
We are adjourned.
Have a great week, everybody.